The regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas will now come to order. It is 7:02 PM, 15th May, 2014. Our invocation will be by Pastor Clive Butter of Crosspoint Fellowship. That will be followed by the pledge. Pastor?
Could you join me in the prayer again? God, we bow before you, recognizing that you are our Creator and we have given this life and you wanted to have life abundant. And we thank you for that promise that you've given us through your word through your son, Jesus Christ. And it's because of that today that we can gather freely in this country to take care of business for the city. And I pray you blessings on this city and all that they represent. And thank you for the councilman, for the mayor, for Chris Pearson, the manager, and all the employees that give their time and effort and energy to make this the best city it can possibly be. We pray for our police officers and our firefighters that you protect them and use them to protect us. We thank you for them. And we're praying that you would give each one that makes a decision tonight wisdom and guidance and direction so that they will make the best decision for our community, for each citizen, so that we can grow and be the best that we can be and bring honor and glory to you. So we give you praise and thanks for every good and perfect gift that you blessed us with. We pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Face the flag hand over heart. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. As to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Ms. Israel.
Here.
Mr. Sides.
Here.
Mr. Magel.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Ms. Coronado.
Here.
Mr. Gagos.
Here.
All members are present. Item number four is consent agenda, approval of minutes of the regular session of May 1st, 2014.
Mayor.
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda, item A. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of May the 1st, 2014.
We moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, item A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of May 1st, 2014. Any discussion? Not preceded the vote, those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to move a couple of items around. Yeah. It's going to cut you off a little bit. Item number 24, Mr. Pearson has asked me to move up to now. We're also going to move item number seven after item number 13 for obvious reasons. So, item number 24, is discussion action on making the necessary repairs to the playscape. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Councilmen, and what have you said at the time where the City Government is sitting. This deals with our playscape in the park, as many of us know. This playscape was designed many years ago by well-known architects who worked at the park. It was built and proved community better. I believe it was some trainee, not helping, like an airport space when it was put together. Since that time, it was something thirty-some odd years later, we've had some challenges with the playscape. Dating back two years ago, we were down, about fifteen folks had filed a court, did some emergency repairs to alleviate concerns for safety of children. Since that time, we have been back several times. Most recently, and based on our conversations with some folks, because of the extreme dry weather and the separation of the wood, we continue to have an ex exposure of incels coming up out of the wood, which does cause a hazard for our children. We were hoping to make this budget cycle, it was going to be placed into the budget recommended in the draft budget, in the budget message, I believe, of June 25th, to allocate funds for the council to allocate funds to completely rebuild that place. Due to the extreme nature of what's happened over the last several months, we began engaging conversations amongst ourselves. As a result, we asked some local carpenters, craftsmen, local residents to work with us towards a price to completely rebuild that playscape. Those gentlemen went down there and looked at some of the postings to see the nature of decay maybe underneath the surface of the sand. We met with one of the gentlemen yesterday, and I ask you to come here tonight, Mr. Garcia is in the back, sitting with Mr. Rainey and our Westwood Land Superintendent, Mr. Aldisso, because we know that the council wants to see who to deal with. We're recommending tonight to give us the authority and the direction to move forward and to bring Mr. Garcia and his crew on board to completely rebuild that playscape, materials and labor under emergency operation, not to exceed $50,000. We think this is an excellent price. We think that we can have it completed by labor day, it's not sooner, depending on what Mr. Garcia assures us after. I'm sure our government, if they're concerned, will take on in the next couple of weeks, they will be down there. Now, there are purchasing provisions at state level in our charter based on $25,000 to $50,000. The city will buy all material, so the labor costs would be well within those limits for the council to give us direction tonight, due to the emergency nature of the safety of the children. We're asking for that direction to appropriate funds out of the council's fund balance and execute an agreement on what Mr. Garcia should replace that playscape immediately, section by section, one piece of lumber at a time. Now, let me say this. We are not carpenters or experts. Mr. Wees is on our end with him, and we ask him for his recommendations for the preservation of that playscape and the longevity of that playscape. We will use one of the nice ones, which is down there. And his response to us is he simply takes a couple of cups of water still a couple of times a year, later than fall and later than spring, and it will preserve it and withstand it just the time for a new one to come up. Due to the extreme emotional capital in that playscape by many citizens and children across the city, and due to the fact that if we were to say, no, let's take it down by something, we could not even get a tenth of what we got down there right now for $50,000. So our recommendation and we ask for directions tonight is to move forward at a price beyond exceed $50,000 labor and materials, could we get rebuilding and replacing that playscape as soon as possible.
Mayor?
No.
Gagos. Mayor, I'm ready to make motion.
Please.
I move to approve the, to make the necessary repairs to the playscape, an agreement drawn up with Mr. Garcia and the City of Pleasanton, not to exceed the amount of $50,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to make the necessary repairs of the playscape, to draw up an agreement with Mr. Garcia and the City of Pleasanton, not to exceed $50,000. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
Yes, Mr. Pearson, I have a couple of things that I wanted to say. First of all, since the number of nails seem to be backing themselves out of the playscape, are we going to consider shutting that down until it is rebuilt?
Yes, ma'am. Because of safety factors, because of salvageable water or excess lumber laying around, we will close the playscape. I think it is a small, a small time of inconvenience to get while we first built in 1985 back to the state it was in 1985. But because of those safety factors, we will close it. Yes, ma'am.
And to be honest, I know that the council had previously, over two years ago, discussed the possibility of looking at other playscapes. And I agree that this is probably the most cost-effective thing for now. So, as we move forward, I hope we'll make other considerations as well. Thank you.
Other discussion? Not preceded the vote, those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now back in at item number five, discussion action to bring a full fund balance ordinance to the city for adoption as policy. This is our finance director.
I wonder if you'd be able to talk to you, but I was pretty comfortable with you. The purpose needed to approve this form of fund balance is so it can improve our bond rating whenever we incur debt or make your capital improvements and equipment. And the higher bond rating we have, the better interest rates that will be yielded. We have two options. We can either approve the fund balance policy ordinance and improve our bond rating, or not approve the fund balance policy ordinance and not increase the bond rating. My recommendation is that we approve it so that we can improve any future bond ratings or debt the City of Pleasanton may need to incur at a future date.
Mayor?
Gagos.
Yes, I move to approve bringing a fund balance ordinance to the city of, to the council for adoption as policy.
Second.
Moved and seconded to bring a fund balance ordinance to council for adoption as policy. Any discussion? None preceded the vote, those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six is ordinances and resolutions. Item A is reading and adoption of ordinance number 14-1108, adopting a fund balance policy for the City of Pleasanton. And ordinance number 141108 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, adopting a fund balance policy for the City of Pleasanton, Texas, providing for a minimum level at which fund balance is to be maintained to ensure that there will be adequate liquid resources in the event of unanticipated circumstances and events, revenue shortfalls, and anticipated expenditures, and declaring emergency.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number 14-1108, adopting a fund balance policy for the City of Pleasanton.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 14-1108, adopting a fund balance policy for the City of Pleasanton. Any discussion? None preceded the vote, those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Thank you. She already gone. Item number seven, again, we'll be moving that after item number 13 before item number 14. So, item number eight, regular session of May 15th, 2014, is hereby recessed to hold an executive session pursuant of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, subchapter D, as it pertains to consultation with attorney, 551.071. Executive session matters may be discussed and acted upon if appropriate in open session. Time is 18:14.
Mayor, for the record, I'd like to state that I'm going to recuse myself from executive session, agenda item A.
The regular session of May 14th, 2014, is hereby reconvened 7:52 PM. Item number 10, or item number 11, is discussion action concerning complaints, claims, requests, and demands from Erastreino.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I would like to direct the City Manager to, to move forward as was discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded to direct the City Manager to move forward as discussed in executive session. Any discussion? None preceded the vote, those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, for the record, I'm abstaining from agenda item, from voting on agenda item number 11.
Item number 12 is administer the oath of office to elected officials. Judge?
Oh, I think I have those.
Yes, sir.
You scared me. I thought you had a board. Woo! Yeah, they even asked to put my book.
Are we ready? Yes, sir, I will. I'm not going to say you have the right to term me, Father. Aye?
By the way.
Aye. Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully execute the duties
that I will faithfully execute the duties
of the office of
Of the office of, okay, Councilmember District One.
Of the City of Pleasanton.
Of the City of Pleasanton.
And will, to the best of my ability
And will, to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of the State of Texas
And of the State of Texas.
And ordinances of the City of Pleasanton
And ordinances of the City of Pleasanton.
I further more solemnly swear or affirm
I further more solemnly swear or affirm
that I have neither directly
Have neither directly
nor indirectly
Nor indirectly
paid, offered, or promised to pay
Paid, offered, or promised to pay
contribute yet
Contributed
nor promised to contribute
Nor promised to contribute
any money or valuable thing
Any money or valuable thing
or promised any public office
Or promised any public office
or employment as reward
Or employment as reward
for the giving or withholding
For the giving or withholding
of a vote at the election
Of a vote at the election
and for chile's elected
And for chile's elected
to secure my appointment.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay, congratulations.
Enjoy your time.
Again.
Have fun. We take care and enjoy. Anyone that complains, feel, not anymore, go somewhere else. You take care, Jim. Thank you.
I'll see you at Redstone. I'll see you at Redstone. Enjoy it.
He said that I don't want to split count. You're the one that preaches that.
And Mr. Magel.
I'm taking it down.
Where's Mr. Magel?
Give it a kiss.
He's already sitting down. He's not done yet. We have some plaques that we'd like to present to our two actual members. Jimmy Magel, in appreciation for his service to the citizens of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, as councilmember District One, from May of 1996 until May of 2014. Presented today, May 15th, 2014.
I really appreciate the opportunity to work with all of the citizens of the City of Pleasanton, the mayor, and especially our new City Manager. You really don't realize until you're sitting on the council, how many people's lives that you can impact as a councilperson. Hundreds of people in this city. We provide water, sewer, fire protection, police protection, fire department, a number of things that we do in this city, and they're all coming and directed through the City Council. And it's a real big impact. Thank you again. Thank you for that.
Plaque is presented to Kathy Coronado, appreciation, fearless service to the city, citizens of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, as councilmember for District Three, from May 2012 until May 2014. Presented today, May 15th, 2014.
Thanks, sir.
I'd like to thank both of y'all. Y'all both spent a lot of time serving the city, so I appreciate that as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Glenn, are we gonna think?
Wait, wait, I've got a recess.
Resess?
Yeah. Well, we're not gonna recess. Item number seven, I'd like to bring back. Item number seven is action on appointing councilmember, Magel's, yeah, appointing councilmember Magel's nomination to replace Doug Best as a member of the Pleasanton Parks Board. Again, we had to move that to now because at the time, Mr. Magel was still Councilmember Magel, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
I move to appoint Mr. Jimmy Magel as, to replace Doug Best as a member of the Pleasanton Parks Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jimmy Magel to replace Doug Best as a member of the Pleasanton Parks Board. Any discussion? None preceded the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You just, you thought you were done. You're not done yet. All right, we'd like to take a brief recess, 10 minutes, and we'll just take a brief recess. There's some refreshments at the back. If you'd like to come up and talk to the newly appointed councilmembers or our freshly retired councilmembers. And we'll reconvene back at 10 after.
You have one retarded. Well, where's Pearson? Where's the attorney?
You're ready, Mr. Boswell.
Cindy?
Starting at 10.
But where's Pearson?
I hope I didn't do that. We're gonna continue on. Please feel free to access the refreshments at the back, but we're gonna, we're gonna continue on. Item number 14 is selection of mayor pro temp.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that Jeanie Israel be named mayor pro temp for the following year.
Could you state it in the fashion of, I nominate?
I nominate, I nominate.
Just wanna make sure it's in there.
I nominate Jeanie Israel as mayor pro temp.
I second it.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Yes.
Mr. Sides?
I nominate Gerald Gallego.
All right, any other nominations? All right. All those in favor of Councilman Israel, raise your right hand. All those in favor of Mr. Gagos, raise your right hand. Ms. Israel is the mayor pro temp. Item number 15, assistance comments. If you are a citizen of or a taxpayer to the City of Pleasanton, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments for three minutes. Know that council and staff may not comment. And we do have two people already signed on. Warren Dunkey?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Pleasant City Council. My name is Warren Dunkey. I live at 109 William, two houses away from the intersection William and FM 3350. Although my home is not in the Pleasant City limits, we are in the city's extraregional jurisdiction in favor of city water, fire protection, solid waste control. My concern this evening is the intersection near my house, William Drive and FM 3350, also known as Goodman Street or Old Crystal Road. The intersection is among two main access points to several neighborhoods with largest provisions, the Oak Forest subdivision, much of which is within the Pleasant City limits. The other access point, of course, is Old Valley, leading into FM 476 on the north end of the neighborhood. The intersection is used by a variety of vehicles, most of which are private on the wheels to trucks, but also including commercial vehicles and some publicly owned and operated vehicles, pool pumps, city maintenance, or service vehicles, solid waste and reusable pickup trucks, and utility service vehicles operated by utilities such as APT. FM 3350 is generally well-maintained, nicely, maintained by techs on it. Speed limit has recently been lowered from 70 miles an hour to 55, which has made the area a little bit safer. That's not resolved all the problems associated with it. There was a three-deck accident Tuesday morning with injuries. That was driver in attention and excess speed, probably to cause that. Also, there was an accident five years ago involving my wife, which she would rear end it. Again, it was in attention and I think she was probably that. The, not all of these are related to the design of the intersection, but there are some problems with the intersection that I would like to address.
About one minute.
One minute?
Yes, sir.
I'll try to. One problem with the intersection is that it's dark at night. It's very hard to see William coming off of 3350. I would add, would like to see if there would be some way that we can get streetlight out there. The other thing is with all of the access roads, residential lines, the roads that enter into 3350, there is no signage in either direction telling people who may not be familiar with the road that there are residential streets. And when it was 70 miles an hour, it was really bad. 55 miles an hour is still a little bit faster than I'd like it to be. The problem that I see is ownership of this intersection. Who owns it? 3350 obviously is techs on it. The county owns William Road and the maintain. But the safety issues affect a lot of people, including a lot of Pleasant residents. And I would like some attention directed to it. I don't know what the City Council, what you can do about it, but your attention and concern with being big help. And I thank you for your time, and if any help can be done, I would very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's have Donna Fisher.
Hello. I'm Donna Fisher. I'm here tonight representing the Atos Rose Family Crisis Center. I have recently taken over as the director of the center. So I know that y'all are aware of the center and what we do, who we are, where we're at. We are located near Pleasanton. We're very small in agency, so it's providing a lot of services to our community. And I just want to thank you for your support. Y'all have been very supportive all along. I did bring some flyers that would like to leak here for the citizens. But I just want to say, I do need to say, Mr. Pearson, I know what you've done, and you promised $2 million.
Ah! Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. Item number 16 is departmental reports.
I would like to call on Julian Rodriguez, our utility superintendent. He'll be doing the construction report and the department reports.
Okay.
Water production for the month of May is averaging 2 million gallons per day. Maximum daily production is also 2 million gallons per day. And total production as of today is 28.6 million gallons. All water plants are in full operation, with the exception of industrial tanks, excuse me, which is down with a motor problem. Repairs will be completed on Friday, this coming Friday. The Highway 97 water main, 8-inch water main extension has started, and to date, the construction crews have installed over 400 feet of 8-inch C900 PVC pipe. The water department crews continue to identify and replace broken isolation valves, and there are repla, and replacements of leaking fire hydrants that exist throughout the city. And those are averaging on, the fire hydrants and the water valves that we have replaced so far, the average years on them is about 60 years that they've been in service. So, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Rodriguez? Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Move to, uh, item number seventeen. City Manager's Message.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, and to the new members of the Council, uh, welcome to the freight. And the staff stands ready to assist you and work with you in any way we possibly can. Mayor, this evening, we'd like for the Council to know that Mr. Weisner and I had a brief discussion this afternoon, and his reports are going to start moving more towards the planning side of public works, what's out in front, what are we looking at, where are we going from here? And then the construction reports, um, as necessary, will be given through the various, um, Department Superintendents and Formans. We have a, a lot of speed or RPMs, if you will, on the planning. We're just, planning becomes more and more of a focus for us, um, as the growth in this quarter continues.
The street improvements program update, uh, there will be many next week with Mr. Medley.
And our Geotech, we are due some reports tomorrow morning, um, on the recommendation on some of the street improvements, the street reconstruction, street rehabilitation. At present time, um, we have identified also five more dilapidated structures that will be brought to the Council at the next meeting, and we hope to get direction from the Council. Uh, these structures have been posted, letters have been sent. We are at the sixty-day timeframe on most of those structures, so we'll hope to get, uh, direction from the Council to move forward. Annexation update, we hope to have an annac- a resolution for annexation ready for the Council at the next meeting. If accepted and passed by the Council, our ninety-day clock will begin, uh, which is a process of advertisements, public hearings, and letters to those who are notified in the annexation area. Uh, we feel like there's some that will be offered non-annexation reasons based on ag exemptions, and this is allowed in the local government code. Um, they'll be allowed to stay outside the city limits unless they change or start building or subdividing. As this window begins and this time clock begins, we will try to stay as sensitive as we can. What one thing we do absolutely know is that the annexation ordinance has to be in the hands of the Council at a regularly scheduled meeting for possible adoption. Will we go through the two readings as well? Civic Center Library update, we did sign a change order today, or yesterday. Um, the process has begun, um, establishing a curb and a forty-eight inch sidewalk, uh, as I was corrected by Mr. Rainey this evening, uh, along the landscape bed between, uh, the Resco Pharmacy and the parking lot driveway. Um, we're very happy with the response of the contractors on the front of the Freedom Center, based on some, uh, turf over there that just did not green up, uh, to acceptance of them and ourselves. They have been extracting turf for the last three days over there and placing new turf, uh, on the ground. And many of us witnessed the new turf this morning at the memorial, uh, for the fallen officers. I might mention that, um, we are also looking at a number of, uh, initiatives. I will tell you that the Civic Center, uh, and Andreas and Mr. Peterson, they are very busy. Um, bookings are, are continuing at a rapid pace, meetings are continuing at a rapid pace, and most recently, uh, we had the, uh, First Parks Committee meeting over there, uh, I believe Monday night, and we followed that up an hour and a half later, or before that, with a Charter Review Commission meeting. Um, the folks that I'm, um, exposed to in, in those meetings, uh, scenarios over there just, uh, really feel relaxed and really feel comfortable and really like the, uh, the atmosphere. I will tell you that the Zumba class on Tuesdays and Thursdays continues to be a popular spot. I know the ladies are asking women on the Council, and some of the men and the staff of the city are going to be over there to exercise, and, um, the music can be heard all the way into the meeting room, so it's, uh, uh, but, uh, I, I think for all the different reasons that the Center's being used for, and the library as well, um, I think that, uh, the Council should be proud of, of, of what they produced over there. Um, and I know the citizens are proud and even outsiders, uh, that are using the facility. Um, I met several Highway Department patrolmen that were part of the Honor Guard this morning. I had the, uh, I had the occasion to meet, meet with the Police Department at seven over there, but, uh, several Highway Department patrolmen that were part of the Honor Guard came in from San Marcos, Victoria, Lampasas, all points beyond, and they sat down in there about seven fifteen this morning, and they said, "This is one beautiful facility." And I thought I'd tell the Council tonight. I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Questions for Ms. Pearson?
Yes, I just have a comment.
Mr. Gagos?
I noticed that there was an accident, I gue- I guess, out there that one of the bollards was knocked over.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way that they can extend the bollards further north toward the oak tree?
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah, because I think that's the second time they've been hit already, and of course the chains are all messed up too.
We, uh, that individual, I, I might say that, uh, kind of an anecdotal to that was Saturday night, was at the same time our chief was having a reception for his daughter's wedding, and that individual had been working about sixteen hours in the oil field and just fell asleep. Uh, there was nothing else involved on that. Uh, but, uh, he really felt like he had really done something wrong when all hundred and fifty policemen left the reception to go out. But, uh, we, we will be filing claims with that insurance company, and I must say, the bollard did exactly what it was intended to do. He hit one bollard, knocked it over, and, um, they literally had to haul the car away.
Awesome.
A shame, but it served its intended purpose.
Well, I think that if, if possible, they can extend it further north past the oak tree. I think that would be even better, because, you know, it sure hate to have a vehicle go all the way in.
We'll take, look at that, Mr. Gagos.
Thank you.
Good comment, yes.
Other comments, questions? Mayor, Mr. Sands?
Uh, Ms. Pearson, I would like to say one thing that I was really upset and disappointed. I enjoyed being there to begin with. It was a nice ceremony and everything, all under that nature. But half the time, I couldn't hear the speakers up there because of the traffic. So, if we continue like that, I mean, myself, I'm gonna be excluded to any kind of a meeting there in front of that.
Well, Mr. Sands?
Less, lessen more to the traffic than to the persons that are talking.
We did contact Tech Stop to see if that'd allow us to close two eighty-one for the twenty minutes of the ceremony, and they would not allow us to do it. We did ask Tech Stop for anything they would need from us. Uh, we told them after the ceremony, we were as embarrassed as everybody else was, and, uh, you know, we will have a PA system out there in short order. But they did ref- you know, they did tell us that they would come fully equipped with everything needed. They asked us just to, you know, to, to be the host and put some chairs out, and, uh, we had a young man from the high school, uh, blow taps at the end. Uh, little bit of a disconnect, uh, if you will, but I agree with you. Um, I'm kind of hard of hearing anyway, and sometimes I couldn't hear anything, but, um, uh, we, we, we will correct that, and I think this is just one of those things that you, you go through, and, um, uh, we will correct that, but I agree with you.
Well, I'm sure that from the very beginning of the project, for that deal that, that happened there, I figured that it wasn't going to work out, and it don't. It didn't. Not to me.
Mayor?
I feel sorry for that.
Uh, I just wanted to make a comment that I also was there, and I did find the same type of issues. But one thing I did notice is that when the people were facing towards the community center, you could hear them very well, and I think, uh, a well-placed PA system, uh, will take care of that. And, uh, I did, uh, I did appreciate the space as well.
Other comments? Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, we can, uh, skip Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Item Number Nineteen is approved for preliminary plat for Pleasanton High School Subdivision. Our City Engineer.
Mayor and Council?
Good evening.
Looks like you've approved, approved, recommended approval?
I'm recommending approval. The, the subdivision plat's a thirty-four acre lot. Um, that's, uh, all of Hart, or all of the existing, um, school lot along, uh, Stadium Drive and Long Street.
Okay.
Mayor?
Mr. Gagos?
I move to approve the preliminary, preliminary plat for the Pleasanton High School Subdivision.
It's moved, seconded, approve the preliminary plat for Pleasanton High School Subdivision. Any discussion? None. Proceed to the voters. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Discussion action to grant a variance to setback ordinance at Havre Road and the Lane. Interim Community Development Supervisor?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to recuse myself on this Agenda Item Number Twenty, because that's my sister's property.
So, loaded.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're good. Hello? Uh, there, there's actually two properties, uh, on the, the agenda. Uh, first one is located at, uh, sixteen, four, uh, six fourteen Lane, the Lane, property ID two eight one two seven. Uh, this letter to document the property was reviewed and verified for the placement of the purchase of a seventy-five foot mobile home. The mobile home would not meet current required setbacks due to the length on the lot. However, the lot does meet the forty-five, uh, square foot, uh, requirement and, uh, forty-five foot, uh, frontage.
Okay.
Uh, the options, uh, we're asking for a, a variance to the setback ordinance, uh, from twenty-five feet to, uh, twenty feet from the front setback on the address facing side of the, of the roadway, and also, uh, from a ten-foot setback at the rear to a five-foot. It does meet the, the site on the, on the north end and the south end. Uh, we have the options of do not allow the setbacks to reduce, to allow for the placement of the purchase of a mobile home. Uh, second option would be allow for the setbacks to reduce, to allow for the placement of the purchase of mobile home. City staff's recommendation, uh, is recommend a twenty-five foot setback to be reduced to a twenty-foot setback from the street address facing rear, and a ten-foot setback reduced to a five-foot setback. In my opinion, the placement of the mobile home will not create any obstruction to vehicle or pedestrian visibility when you come to the corner of the stop sign.
Okay.
Uh, so, we're asking for a, an, uh, discussion and action on property six fourteen, the Lane.
Okay.
Second property, uh, located at six eighteen, the Lane, property ID, si- there, there's a typo, uh, it's actually property six seven zero six zero, property ID, and this is the same situation.
Okay.
It's the same letter to document that an eighty-foot mobile home located on this property would need a fifteen-foot setback, uh, uh, instead of the twenty-five, would need a si- fifteen foot, and then also a ten foot at the rear five.
Okay.
Same situation, same options. We also need a discussion and action on siting the Lane.
Alright.
Any questions?
I have none. This is an action item.
Mayor?
Cizer.
As soon as I can find it. I'm having, yeah, I'm having difficulties with, uh, lap, uh, with my iPad. Uh, would it be in order to just move on both properties?
I think, I think if you, if we go by the Agenda Item and either grant or not grant a variance...
Okay. Uh, and that is, okay. Um, Mayor, I move to go, to grant a variance on, to the setback on both properties.
As recommended by the supervisor of Community Development.
As recommended by the interim Community Development Supervisor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the variance to the setbacks on both properties as recommended by the interim Community Development Supervisor. Any discussion? None. Proceed to the voters. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Variance is granted. I got you. It was, it was against.
I was against.
Item Number Twenty-One is discussion action to proceed with its contract. Thank you, Ms. Rainey. Discussion action to pursue its contract for many services to provide sales tax compliance reviews to the city of Pleasanton Finance Director. And just, I don't have any trouble with y'all over there. Does anybody have any trouble with who is regularly seated to just speak from their seat?
Oh.
That way you don't have to walk up?
I'll go back.
You, I mean, you can if you are. Microphone.
You know.
This action item is to proceed with a contract for Muni Services similar to the one we have for the Hotel Occupancy Tax Service. Uh, and they'll perform a review of the client's businesses, sales, use, tax remittances, in an effort to ensure proper application of the local sales tax and achieve past or prospective compliance. Uh, they'll also assist in the pre- preparation and finding of amended returns and a reallocation request with the compter's office in order to gain compliance. Um, we can either proceed with a contract with Muni Services to administer a sales, sales tax compliance or not proceed. I recommend that we do proceed, and if we do, I recommend that we make it an effective date of June first, to be in sync with a hotel occupancy tax, uh, contract that we currently have with Muni Services. And if you recall, it was reported, uh, when I reported for, after a year, that we had contracted with Muni Services for the hotel occupancy tax. We generated an additional one hundred and fourteen thousand, and although we're doing really well with the sales tax, uh, revenue, we can always collect more, so, um, I recommend that we proceed with this contract.
Mayor?
Gagos?
I move to approve the contract for Muni Services to provide the sales tax compliance review for the city of Pleasanton, effective date, June the first, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to proceed its contract for Muni Services to provide sales tax compliance reviews for the city of Pleasanton in an effective date of one June, two thousand and fourteen. Any discussion? None. Proceed to the voters. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item Number Twenty-two, discussion action to purchase four new frontline mowers, Pollock Corks Director.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Uh, David Smith will be doing the, uh, uh, request for the frontline mowers.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
Good evening.
Here in the past few months, we've demoed several mowers, uh, to replace the mowers that we have in need of repair. Uh, we have demonstrated the Skaggs, the Hustler, and the Gravely. Uh, after the demos, we decided that the Skaggs brand would be what we would be interested in. Several of our Gravely mowers are out of service at this time, uh, having problems with electrical, such as plugs overheating and melting, wiring harnesses that fuse together. Uh, we have metal fatigue and cracks in our decks of the mowers. Um, most of these mowers are from seven to fourteen years old, and due to the, uh, model of the mowers and the repairs needed, we feel that the replacement of these mowers would be in our best interest.
Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, you're not finished.
If you're prepared.
I am.
Thanks for whacking me. I appreciate that. Um, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to direct the city staff to purchase four mowers at six thousand four hundred
and ninety dollars each from the line items listed above to include for streets, one, uh, one two dash four one three dash five oh one in the amount of six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, and one, uh, for the Water Department, twenty-one four twenty-four five oh four in the amount of six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, and for the Parks Department, number three zero four hundred dash five oh four, the quantity of two at twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Second.
It's moved and seconded, direct the city staff to purchase four mowers at six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars each from the line items listed above to include streets, twelve dash four thirteen dash five oh four one at six thousand four hundred and ninety, Water, twenty-one dash four twenty-four five oh four one at six thousand four hundred and ninety, Parks, thirty dash four hundred dash five oh four two at twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion? None. Proceed to the voters. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Item Number Twenty-two is discussion action, direct the city manager to construct an RFP for consultant to develop a master plan for Pleasanton Park System and to be included in the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget.
Mayor, this is, um, a little bit ahead of the budget, but, um, uh, discussion with several council members in the Parks Board the other night, uh, we have had a major emphasis in the last three years of, of backing up and kind of taking care of what we have in the park. Uh, we've spent, uh, to date, several hundreds of thousands of dollars in untold labor, uh, to bring some of the things, um, including pavilions, pool, handicap accessible and things like that, um, to, um...
the things, including pavilions, pool, handicap accessible and things like that, to a standard that we can all be proud of, and it'll stand the test of time. We've even reconstructed the pump system and the chlorinator system at the swimming pool so that the children's pool and the main pool will be chlorinated properly and evenly. We most recently drained the pool under council direction in the budget this past winter, and that pool was completely resurfaced with some handicap tiles that are necessary. Handicap lift has been purchased in the last year. A lot of the things just kind of go on and on. We all know what's happened with the pavilions, the two pavilions in the River Park have been painted in the last year. We developed a somewhat of a cinder walking track around the pecan orchard. The playscape item was here tonight, and we continue to do some of those things that we feel like that we can, you know, upgrade and present a more aesthetically pleasing park. But it is time for our park system to become more of a focal point with the implementation and further implementation of the master plan as we move along by the Council. We're just asking for the direction from Council this evening to plan in next year's budget to bring a consultant onboard to work with a special select committee of folks that could be named later to include council liaison, Parks Committee participation, and citizens in the community that fit the type of demographics, that understand these types of projects, from engineering to old, old residents, new residents, real estate folks, much like we did with the RFPs to finish the design and finish the construction of the Civic Center and Library project. This will be a long-term effort, probably of six to twelve months, working with a consultant for the citizens of Pleasanton to decide what they want to do with our parks. As we all know, under council direction, we have entertained several items to expand the park system already in the form of the possibility of soccer fields and football fields if we can reach agreement with landowners, and the mayor and I are working feverishly to put a scheduled meeting together to expand the park system in another manner. But at this point in time, with a lot of the ideas that are floating around and a lot of the focus that wants to be brought, especially to the River Park, we feel like it's important to have a professional consultant onboard to work with the citizens of Pleasanton to design a master plan for those parks, and we ask for direction this evening to put that in the budget.
Mayor?
Sisro.
Yes, I'd like to move to direct the city manager to construct an RFP for a consultant to develop a master plan for the Pleasanton Park System and to be included in the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to direct city manager to construct an RFP for consultant to develop master plan for the Pleasanton Park System to be included in the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget. Any discussion?
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
This particular, this particular plan will look at existing and future possibilities, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, sir.
Other comments? None proceeded to vote, as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. We've already taken care of twenty-five, twenty-four, so Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five. So you can, well, there you go, got it. Discussion action to direct city manager and staff to look at feasibility and cost to add a park ranger and security cameras for playscape and present findings to Council for consideration in the two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to direct the city manager and staff to look at the feasibility and cost to add a park ranger and also security cameras for the playscape and present findings to the Council for consideration in the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget.
If there's no second, the motion dies for lack of a second. Item Number Twenty-Six, discussion action to set a schedule for council meetings and council work sessions through July third, two thousand and fourteen.
Mayor, there's a calendar in you all's packet this evening. We wanted to bring scheduled meetings and some work sessions forward for you all this evening. If you reference your calendar for May two thousand and fourteen, you'll see that we're closing out the month, you'll see that there's some special meetings called for the end of May. And I lost my place, bear with me just a minute.
Seems to be going around.
We have the holidays listed there in May, the regular meeting tonight, Agenda due dates. There's a special council meeting on May twenty-eighth for the public hearing on land use assumption and CIP program as designed or outlined in the master plan at six P.M. It's a public hearing only. We want to schedule that, we're on the timeline. This is in reference to the impact fee study that's been ongoing for about a year. There was a meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission last night to forward that to the Council. As we move forward into June, I won't get so redundant with council meeting and Agenda due dates as they're outlined there, but we are asking for the council workshop at six P.M. on a utility project that is part of the land use assumptions. It's a three-objective project, but the end result is part of the future land use assumptions of the master plan. This will be the next annex implementation. There will be several folks, several consultants presenting at that meeting that evening, and we'll present that to the Council. The nineteenth is a regular council meeting. We are asking for a council workshop at six P.M. that evening in keeping with the mayor's intentions to try not to have the folks up here, it's too much outside of regularly scheduled meeting evening, meeting nights. That six P.M. council workshop will be for the staff to present the draft budget and the initiatives for two thousand and fifteen. This is much in keeping with last year, to present a draft budget, get input from the Council, and hopefully direction to move forward. As we move forward from that, we're asking this evening for the Council in a motion to hopefully entertain canceling the first meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting for July third like we did last year, to allow Council and families of staff members who want to take vacations, and to allow the staff to take that draft budget and work towards a proposed budget in August. There is a special council meeting on the ninth of July for a public hearing on the impact fee, implementation of impact fees, and then we move forward to the regular council meeting of July seventeenth. There's also an economic development meeting there on July seventeenth, but for all purposes this evening, if we could get direction from Council to implement a schedule as recommended by the staff in the packet, then we'll move forward to set those special meeting times and move forward with those special hearings.
Mayor?
Gagus?
I move to approve the rescheduling of the city council meetings and special meetings as, for the city council meetings and the council workshop sessions as recommended by staff.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the schedule for council meetings and council work sessions as presented by staff. Any discussion? None proceeded to vote, as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Item Number Twenty-Seven, review of the bills.
No, sir.
If there's none, we'll proceed to item number twenty-eight.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn, as in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Meeting is adjourned at eight forty-eight P.M.